Okay, it's time to convene the Tulare County. September the 11th. Uh, we have a quick call.
Gong.
Here.
Milice.
Here.
Elliott.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch is absent, he informed us. Hiliano.
Here.
Norman. Absent. Aguilar.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, did you read me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we're still standing, would like to take just a moment of silence for the nine eleven, this being the 12th anniversary. All right. Number two is the public comment. This is the, at this time, members of the public may comment on items that are not appearing on the state law matters, cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for a planning commission consideration. So that all parties have an opportunity to speak and any person addressing the planning commission may be limited to the discretion of the chair, that would be me, at all times use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Is there anything, uh, anyone I'd like to bring to the commission here in this time? Moving on to item three, approval of the minutes for August 28, 2013.
I'll make that motion, we approved the minutes on August 28.
I second that motion.
Gong.
Uh, yes.
Milice.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Diaz. Hiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, and for parcel map hearing.
Commissioner Diaz.
Yes.
Uh, staff is requesting that we pull four A as well as four C from the parcel map public hearing, uh, to discuss separately.
Okay, so you want to go through then with the rest of the parcel map hearing?
Yes, sir.
And then come back to these two and revisit them.
Please.
Okay, we have pulled item A and C. Uh, this is for, uh, this is hearing for B, D, E, next it. Uh, but will not be, uh, the, 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 we are looking at.
We'll need to open the public hearing and close the public hearing to see if there are any comments on these items.
Okay. Uh, yeah, let's, uh, welcome the public testimony portion of this public hearing. On, on any of these items, it would be B, D, and E. Any comments on item E though? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing. And now move it to staff. And, uh, this is move, uh, staff.
There is no representation for these parcel maps.
I'll make a motion, we approve four B, four D, and four E.
Second that motion.
Gong.
Yes.
Milice.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Piliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move back to the ones that we pulled this time. Uh, we'll, four, uh, A, and discuss the intended parcel map, number PPM 12 dash 030. Uh, Schultz and Zerling.
Andrew will be giving a brief staff report, and he will indicate why this item has been pulled for separate discussion.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. My name is Andrew Pacheco, I'm with the Tulare County RMA, Planning Branch Planner Two. Give me a second, please. This is a tentative parcel map, and it's to create a home site from 30 acres. Okay, now, the authority to divide the property is under, in section 9.5, Exclusive Agricultural. It's a five acre minimum zoning in this location. Um, this zoning also has the ability to do agricultural things, hold the integrity of the parts of the agricultural operation, and no land may be divided less than five acres, uh, for the purpose of one parcel resulting in the division of land containing less than five acres. However, there is a transaction set forth in section 15D2, uh, where you can go ahead and create home site parcels as amended. Now, the site is located northeast of Exeter, and it's south on Marionette, and it's the 30 acre parcel. Now, this site is also located within an urban area boundary. Now, that boundary itself, let me go ahead and give it to you, uh, is what dictates this map and how it's going to be processed. Now, the map itself would normally be for a waivered parcel map, but because it's within an urban area boundary, um, a final map needs to be filed, okay, as per the conditions and the Subdivision Map Act. So we do have that identified in the summary of the, um, report. Now, it was noticed, it was noticed on the 27th of August, in the newspaper, the Visalia Times Delta, and all the adjacent property owners received notice as well. Okay, the site is itself, as you see, this location right here is a home site parcel. Now, they have frontage on Marionette Avenue also. They're also using a easement that extends from this point over and is going to go ahead and come to this location here, which they're planning to extend this existing easement across the property to this location. There is no roadway or dirt driveway down from Marionette where they can access the property. Um, excuse me. The zoning there, as you can tell, is AE, which is a five acre minimum. This whole entire area is AE. To the south of the property is AE 20. Okay, so that's a 20 acre minimum. Okay, what they're proposing to do is create this home site parcel at this location and use the easement that comes from here, extend it out to the home site itself, and the rest of the property will not be divided in any way else. They do have a house up in here that's accessed from Marionette, and they have other outbuildings, and the rest of the property is used in agricultural. The site itself is not used in agricultural, it's just a home site where they have a house built there. Now, this is a road that they're accessing from Road 180, Anderson Road, and that's the easement that goes clear down and they access to their house. Now, this road, this dirt road travels all the way across and can continue across to Alberta right here. So the easement comes to here, then they want to extend it 25 feet in width for approximately about 404 feet to the home site parcel, which they'll need to identify on the final map as a condition of approval, identifying that this is what they have as their access point to, uh, Road 180. This is the house to the north, and this is off of Marionette. They have access, and this is the location, this is only one driveway that they use, they have nothing else. Okay, the property is also within the ag preserve, which they were going to require to be filing a, um, partial notice of non-renewal for the home site, which will also require a contract amendment to the existing ag preserve as well. Okay, Plan Commission, full hearing, and my recommendation is to approve a category exemption consisting of the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequoia Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 Code Regulation Section 15303 Class 3 pertaining to limit number, limited number of, of new small facilities and structures, and conditionally approve the tentative map number PPM 1235. As an alternative, you can move to approve it, subject to modifications, through additions and deletions, and conditions as discussed, move to deny, and direct staff to prepare findings for denial to be brought back at a subsequent here meeting, or refer back to staff for further report. And that concludes my presentation.
Public hearings, I'll open the public testimony portion. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward? Start with the applicant or the applicant's agent. Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Neil Zerling, I'm a licensed land surveyor, uh, representing Mrs. Schultz in this particular matter. Appreciate your time, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I do want to address, uh, a few things regarding this application and keep this as brief as possible. Firstly, I just want to talk about, uh, the requirement, uh, for a final map or a waiver thereof. Secondly, I want to discuss, um, a few of the conditions of approval. Uh, in regards to the waiver of the final map, the staff report, uh, that I received a copy of, uh, does address, um, this particular matter. I'm referring to page three, under a bold section entitled "Exception to the Final Map." Uh, the report states that the applicant, applicant's agent has submitted an exception to sections seven dash oh one dash 1960 through 1990 pertaining to the requirement of filing a final map. Uh, that is not correct. Those particular sections actually refer to the requirements of a final map, uh, meaning what goes on the title, title sheet, what information goes on the final map, any additional information that may be required by RMA, what type of monumentation is required, and so on, mathematical closures. It does not refer to, uh, the requirement to file a final map. Uh, later in that paragraph, uh, the staff report, um, uh, cites section seven dash oh one, 2360 through 2370, which does refer to the requirements of, uh, an application for a waiver or a requirement to fi- uh, to file a final map, and those particular requirements have been quoted in the staff report. However, I do want to read from section 2360, uh, "The requirements of this article for the filing and approval of a final parcel map may be waived by the Site Plan Review Committee," and just comment that this apparently has not been updated yet. Uh, "This process may be waived by the Site Plan Review Committee if the property to be divided comes within any of the following categories, and then these five categories are cited." I would like to point out that this is not exclusionary. It does not say that the Site Plan Review Committee, or in this case, the Planning Commission, cannot waive, uh, the requirement of a final parcel map if it deems appropriate to do so. And those particular items are found in, or those items to consider in waiving a final map are found in section 2365. And let me read that. "The Site Plan Review Committee shall approve the waiver only if it finds that the proposed division of land complies with all requirements of the Subdivision Map Act and this chapter as to area, improvement and design, floodwater and drainage control, appropriate improved public roads, sanitary sewer, uh, or, yes, sanitary disposal facilities, water supply availability, environmental protection, and all other requirements of state law on this chap, and this chapter with regard to the subdivision of the type proposed." I would, uh, suggest that none of those items come into play on this particular, particular application. The only issue that is involved here is the location within an urban area boundary. This is an application, it is for agricultural division, if you will, we have a 30 acre parcel. It could be divided down to five acre parcels due to the zoning that's on there. Uh, we are proposing, uh, only a home site division, and this is in fact for estate planning purposes. If you look carefully on your assessor's map, you will notice that there is an APN number assigned in the general area where we're proposing the home site. This is an old estate, uh, life estate parcel that we're just trying to clean up. It was very approximate in nature, it didn't even cover the actual residence, and so we're proposing the home site in order to properly distribute this resident to the appropriate heir. Again, the application has no development associated with it. It is remaining as an agricultural parcel. There is no proposed construction or development of structures or public improvements, and therefore it is appropriate to have this parcel map waived. Secondly, uh, as far as the conditions of approval, um, just go through these very quickly. Uh, condition number two, uh, pertains to county fire safe regulations, and I appreciate the intent of the notification, uh, regarding these requirements, but again, there is no proposed development, and, uh, it would seem that this particular condition is inappropriate. The last sentence in this particular, uh, condition reads, "All required, improved, shall be complied prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy." And I'm not sure exactly how to interpret that, but we have no pending certificates of occupancy because we do not have any development or construction on this project. Condition number three, uh, pertains to the access easement that Andrew delineated. Again, I have, uh, submitted legal descriptions which contain the appropriate language for the inclusion of that 25 foot easement, and I believe that, uh, that is, uh, appropriate for inclusion into a resolution, uh, regarding this matter rather than a final map, and I would defer to, uh, engineering if you have any questions as far as the, uh, appropriateness of that legal description. Uh, the fourth condition, uh, refers to, uh, US Fish and Wildlife and, um, other measures regarding construction or development. Uh, and again, we have no proposed development on this parcel, so I would suggest that this condition can be eliminated. Condition number five, uh, refers to the, uh, filing of a notice of partial non-renewal, and, uh, we can certainly, uh, prepare that, and that is not a problem. However, the last, uh, sentence in this particular condition reads, "The application must be deemed complete prior to recordation of this resolution, condition, conditionally approving this land division." Um, it's referring to the resolution, which is what I am suggesting, rather than a final map, so we have some inconsistencies here. Uh, condition number seven, again, we have the same inconsistency. Uh, the first sentence reads, "Failure, failure to cause the recording of a final parcel map in this case, uh, an approved or conditionally approved, uh, tentative parcel map shall expire in two years." I would again suggest that this should be a resolution of approval rather than a final parcel map. I've gone through these items very quickly, uh, in the interest of time, uh, but I would like to answer any questions that you may have regarding this project, and, uh, appreciate your consideration in, uh, waiving the final map, as, uh, in my opinion, this is only going to serve to, to lengthen this process and, uh, cost more dollars. Uh, it just doesn't seem appropriate to go through that process for this project. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you, Chairman Diaz. Uh, yes, I do want to comment on this project. Um, in regards to the waiver of the final map, it is true that the, um, a final map is required for any, uh, tentative, uh, tentative parcel map that is within an urban area boundary, and that is, uh, from section seven, zero one, two, three, six, zero, waiver of the final map. Uh, that is true, and, uh, but in, there is a history, uh, depending on the circumstances of the parcel map, uh, that has been waived by the decision-making body so that the applicant does not have to go through the final parcel map stage, so that would be at your discretion. Um, in regards-
I'm sorry, Charlotte, in addition to that, an exception has been filed by my client in this particular matter in regards to the requirements, uh, for the waiver of a final parcel map, and that is the normal process that we have gone through historically in order to have this waiver, uh, considered by RMA.
And that is, that is a fact also. If a parcel map does not meet the findings for waiver of the final map, the applicant can submit an exception to those findings, and that, in this case, that's what, uh, Mr. Zerling has done. So that would be up to you as to whether you would like to require the final map or not. And I would like to make a brief comment on the conditions that, uh, Mr. Zerling noted, uh, specifically condition number two and condition number four. Those are pretty standard conditions that go into our parcel maps, um, and they can be revised to, um, re- uh, refer to future development of the site, would have to comply with these conditions. So I don't see that as a, uh, reason for, uh, removing those conditions, just revising them. Uh, as far as the, uh, condition number five regarding the, uh, partial non-renewal, uh, that also is a requirement that the, um, application for the partial non-renewal be complete prior to recording this resolution, or if a final map is recorded, then it would be, uh, prior to record, uh, recording the final map. So that verbiage in that condition could be all, uh, revised as well, to meet our means. And in terms of the, um, Mr. Zerling's comment regarding the Site Plan Review Committee, um, as you're all aware, there was an ordinance, uh, approved by the board, adopted by the board over a year ago, which transferred all of the duties of the Site Plan Review Committee as well as the zoning administrator to the Planning Commission, so.
Charles, any more?
No, sir, that's it.
Anything else to add?
Uh, no, I appreciate that, uh, I think we would be, uh, uh, we would concur with staff that, uh, the rewording of those conditions would certainly be appropriate and would like to review those. Um, and I think that would cover our concerns. Just for clarification, the, the items that need to be reworded are condition number two, condition number four, condition number five, and also condition number seven, depending upon your action this morning.
Is this public testimony portion of this, uh, anybody else would like to make on the final decision? Seeing none, I'll go to the public testimony portion. Uh, if you're back to your staff, are we going to continue this, or are we going to-
We are not, this is not for, we're not requesting a continuance of this item. Uh, the, the issue here, the main issue besides revising those conditions is whether you will, uh, require the final parcel map to be submitted or waive the final parcel, parcel map, uh, based on, uh, Mr. Zerling's testimony.
Seems like it's appropriate to go ahead and cha- modify those, uh, those conditions to, I guess, refer to future development.
Are we comfortable with changing the wording on all of this with, and going ahead to pass this, or should we send it back to staff and have them reword all of it, and then do a waiver of the final map? I'm asking you guys.
I, I think, uh, both, the representative have already agreed to what Charlotte has proposed, so I don't see why we would need to send it back.
Verbiage would, uh, be revised based on, um, whether you require the final map to be filed or, or not.
I would, I would say we could go ahead and approach it to approve, uh, wait, final map. Uh, tentative comments, two, four, five, and seven. And, uh, with that, with that portion of two- I would make that motion good, and then that would, uh, also, uh, through, uh, revise maybe those sections, revise, uh, section two, four, five, and seven, and conditions. Okay? So I will approve, uh, recommend that we approve the categorical exemption consistent with sequo and, uh, conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 12 dash 035 and tentative, uh-
Including the waiver of the final map.
The waiver of the final map.
I second that.
Gong.
Yes.
Milice.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Hiliano.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, the four C, since, uh, the parcel map, uh, PPM 12 dash zero one seven, and we're going to tell them that. P categorical exemption intended parcel map to allow the division of one, 28.59 acre parcel, meaning two parcels, one at 19.55 acres and the other at 8.73. And the site is located on the east side of, uh, Road 88, north of, uh, State Highway 198 in Visalia, and I don't think Ann is here, is she?
Um, Ann is here, uh, but we are, uh, staff is recommending that this item be continued to the September 25, uh, public hearing, and that is to allow, uh, staff to meet with the city of Visalia as well as the applicant to work out the issues pertaining to possible annexation of the site as well as, um, the parcel map itself. Um, we received correspondence yesterday, which I believe has been passed out to you, uh, from the city of Visalia. Um, Mr. Telligan is here- Mr. Telegan is here also to speak on the matter, if you have any questions. It is a public hearing, so we would have to, you would have to open a public hearing. However, we still are respectfully requesting a continuance of this item.
We'll open up the public testimony portion of this, and we will, chances are, continue that to the next meeting. So is there anybody that would like to make comments? And of course, and assuming, assuming that we are successful in getting a continuance on this issue today.
I'll make that motion that we continue September 25th. Time uncertain, is that appropriate?
Gong?
Yes.
Milice?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Diaz?
Pilianno?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
So this will not be noticed again, right Charlotte?
No, sir, it will not.
This is your motion for the 25th. Move on to item five, the continued public hearing, special use permit PSP 13-025, Jesus and Maria Campos. This has been continued from, what was the date?
Two dates.
Well, here, it's continued from August 14th to the 13th. April, with, here with us today, April, you have the floor.
Thank you Chairman Diaz and Commissioners. At the July 24th and August 14th, Planning Commission meetings, we heard testimony regarding concerns about trucks and parking on Morrison Street outside Tulare. We have revised the site plan to make a loop inside the property. The neighbors who expressed concerns before have asked for a meeting with staff, that meeting to take place next Wednesday, so staff requests that we continue the hearing just once more through the 25th of September, so that the neighbors, the applicants, county staff can meet with them.
And, this is a public hearing, and if we're going to continue, is there anybody that would like to speak today, knowing that we're going to continue this? Continue the public testimony portion, and then, I'm making a motion to-
I'll make that motion that we continue special use permit PSP 13-025 until-
25th of September.
September 25th.
A second.
A second. Gong?
Yes.
Milice?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Pilianno?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Will not be noticed, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Item 6 is a public hearing, 6A, special use permit PSP 13-006. Jeff LaFleur, conditional exemption special use permit to allow a third resident, mobile home, 3.37 acre parcel, and an 1840 exclusive ag zone. The site is located on the north side of Avenue 332, approximately three-quarters of a mile east of State Highway 198. Can I add anything?
Yes, good morning again. This is a special use permit to allow a third residence on 3.37 acres. The applicant Jeff LaFleur is the owner of the property, and his, Richard LaFleur and his mother are here. Now, the location on this site is located on Avenue 332, which is southeast of Woodlake. Parcel is surrounded by agricultural, and also residential. Now, these pieces of property that are residential are in clusters, as you can identify, that these clusters right here are all residentially used, and the large pieces are not. So, there's no changes at this point. They were properly notified through the mail, August 27th, 2013, and in the newspaper of Isaias Delta as well. As you can see right here, this is the site, this whole clump is used as residential. They, they're not doing anything different to the property, they're just continuing the residential use. The occupants of the houses on the location are agricultural workers. One of them has a daughter that wants to put his daughter in there, and that's the reason why they're wanting to add the third residence, because they're wanting to keep the family together. They're going to use the wells, this has wells, and septic tanks. They're going to share a well with the new residents. This is also located within an urban area boundary, and the City of Woodlake did not want any development out there, because of the reason is that they claim that it's hard to integrate county standards to city standards. But if you look at the property, let me give you an overall feel. It's quite a distance away from the city limits itself, and it would be sometime before the city would annex that area out there for development. Okay. The zoning out there is AE40, which is exclusive agricultural. This is in compliance with the general plan, and also in compliance with zoning, because they are following a use permit process. Because it's within an urban area boundary, we had to do an RVLP study on it. This is a quarter mile radius from the site, and this is a half mile radius. It came out to about nine points, so it leaves the decision up to the Planning Commission to make that determination, and this is where we're at at the hearing. The site itself, as you see, is, this is a proposed house located to the western end of the property, the farm laborer. This is a house right here, it's got its own well, and this is the other mobile home right here, which is a family member, he's also an ag worker, he's wanting to put his daughter in this location. They did do a water analysis, the water came back bacterially safe, so that was good. There are no water streams, or any floodways, or any wetlands traversing the property. The area is used as croplands, except for that location, that cluster right there, but it is flatlands. They do have a golf course to the west of them, directly to the west, so that was also complied. There's no special species of concern, but there is a condition in the resolution identifying that if they do run across something, that they are to contact us, or any further investigation. This is the location where they're wanting to place the third residence, they're building the area up, so they can go ahead and do that. This is a house that's existing on the property. That's the distance between the house and the new third residence. Okay. This is the pump, that's an individual pump for this house. This is the mobile home that's existing there, as you can see, the mobile home. And that's, this is the dwelling where the father lives, and he wants his daughter to live at that other location. We hold a public hearing. Recommendation is to approve the categorical exemption consistent of California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to limited number of dwellings, small structures or, or structures, and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 13-006. The alternate, okay, move to approve subject, do modifications through additions and deletions and conditions as discussed. Alternate two, move to deny. Alternate three, refer back to staff for further study and report. And that would conclude staff report.
Yes, sir, and ma'am, my name is Richard LaFleur, I am Jeff LaFleur's father. I'd like you to consider this application. The pictures that he showed of the family, that daughter is wanting to move into this mobile home, he has done substantial development there, they have an extended garden, they have some livestock back there, so, he's, he's pretty stable, is where he wants to live, and he's anxious to get his daughter moved onto this property. We have complied with all the regulations that the county has, has given us. This is really the best use of this three-and-a-half, 3.7 acre of property, but we would, we would seriously appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Repeat again? We didn't quite hear you. Oh. Other than that, they, they do have the, the mobile home that they had purchased, and it's at the school grounds right now, and they're just trying to get that from the school district itself. The school is telling them that they need to move the structure as soon as possible, and they've been working at this. The reason why this application took so long is because the City of Woodlake was telling them that they couldn't do it, and that's the reason why we had to do the RVLP study on this, to refer it back to the Planning Commission. But they need to get this structure off the school district grounds, and they're working at that, and they're working with the school district in order to try to get this completed. They haven't moved it on site, so they're in compliance with, with the county regulations, and are not violating anything at this time.
Okay. Anyone else now would like to provide testimony of this? See none of-
Have a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to point out that there was a bacteriological test on the water, which turned out to be satisfactory in term, in regards to public health. And also, if you would take a look at your existing zoning map in your packet, and also your aerial photograph, your graphics, you'll see that this request is within, if you will, a cluster of developments, housing development in that area, with very small parcels, and from staff's point of view, a finding could be made that it's just more development within that particular cluster of houses, as opposed to new development out in new ag lands, open ag lands. That's all I have to say.
Okay, close the public hearing. Move it to commission for comments?
I have a question, please. Andrew cited one of the reasons being for doing the categorical exemption, because it's farmworker housing, but-
That is correct.
They don't, there's, is there farming around that, that they work at? I, I guess I'm kind of confused as how that is farmworker housing.
It's not employee housing, but agricultural workers, where they do work for other farmers. Farmworker housing, I might have misused, it's not employee housing as a state guideline thing. It's agricultural workers within the county itself.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
it should be removed in the resolution. So, that is a condition, that is a standard, if it is no longer in compliance with the approval of the special use permit, that the structure shall be removed, or they must come back into compliance. And our billing code people will take care of that, and they do have inspections and monitoring compliance with this.
Seems like the biggest issue, of course, is with Woodlake, but since they're so far away, and we don't know what's going to happen later on, I, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve this third house, this third building.
I'll second.
Gong?
Yes.
Milice?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Diaz?
Pilianno? Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
I would just like to comment that, again, this is why the RVLP should be put in use, and it's working, and this is a perfect example of that. I would have probably said no on this project, just because I agree with Mr. Diaz about that many residences being in a spot, but if the RVLP did come up to a nine, and that's our range that we use, it's working. Just wanted-
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioners.
Okay. Move on to item 6B, public hearing, and the parcel map, track map, number TM 24. Charlotte, do you have a comment?
Yes, yes, sir. We are also asking for this item to be continued to September 25th. We received several emails and telephone calls yesterday, as a matter of fact, from, in, from persons in opposition to this proposal, so staff would like the additional time to review those comments and respond accordingly, and we think that that can be done by the next Planning Commission hearing.
Okay, thank you Charlotte.
It is a public hearing, and Scott's available to make a presentation if you-
Okay, Scott, go ahead and make your presentation.
Good morning Chairman Diaz and fellow Commissioners. My name's Scott Cochran, project planner for the tentative Track Map 824. The recommended action today is to recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program for Track Map 824, and recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve Track Map Number 824, dividing a 43 acre parcel into 17 parcels of approximately 2.5 acres each. This project is located in Kennedy Meadows, on the west side of Kennedy Meadows Road, and south side of Goman Road. And you have Goman Road along here, Kennedy Meadows going north-south here, and there's a private vehicle, vehicle access easements running east-west, and then another one north-south, so all parcels would have access to either Goman Road or Kennedy Meadows Road. And then you also have, and the pictures will show it, the Grumpy Bear Restaurant right in the heart of the proposed map. Again, you have Goman Road to the north, Kennedy Meadows to the, Kennedy Meadows Road to the east, Grumpy Bear Restaurant here, and then the rest of the development is within this area of the aerial photograph. The pictures, these are taken from on Goman Road looking south. And this is the Grumpy Bear Restaurant area. And, just as sort of a disclosure to the applicant, or this project, once it's, you know, tenatively approved for the rezone, they would have to come back for most uses through a use permit process and site plan review. And they meet the 2.5 acre minimum, which is in goal A of the Kennedy Meadows Plan. And then there's other policies, 8, 13, 15, and 24, that would deal with access to the main road, they qualify for that. Water supply sewage disposal would have to be engineered, there's wildland fires and, and noise that are, would be considered through that, you know, discretionary permit process. And then general plan policies that would also kick in at the later development would be open space character, natural landscapes, indirect source review, dust suppression measures, building and codes, new building fire hazards, private water supply, provision of inadequate road network, county improvement standards, standards, well testing, private sewage disposal standards, and fire protection standards. There were no species of concern listed on the, on the map. This project, not only through the mitigated egg deck, but was out for project review, Department of Fish and Wildlife had no comments on the project. There are no wetlands directly within the project area, and the property owners in the Visalia Times Delta was, were notified of this hearing, and in addition to that, the, the paper was notified for the 30-day notice for the mitigated negative declaration. We did, on the mitigated egg deck, receive comments from Caltrans, and what they would like to see as an added condition is that all subsequent proposed development, prior to being approved on the proposed lots within the Track Map 824, are required to be reviewed by Caltrans to determine the impacts and necessary improvements to the state highway system to mitigate those project-related impact. That does not appear in the resolution right now, but that would be, you know, as amended and then incorporated into. be, you know, as amended and then incorporated into. So, summary is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for Track Map 824. Recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve Track Map 824, dividing the 43-acre parcel into 17 parcels of approximately 2.5 acres each. And again, you're going to continue this item, but it was to hold the public hearing and then make those recommendations. And you have alternatives. And that concludes my presentation.
My name is William Ferguson. I'm the owner of the property and proposing the development. If I get a little shaky or off, got up early to drive from Ridgecrest this morning, so feel free to keep me on track. My address is 1539 North China Lake Boulevard, Ridgecrest, California, 93555. First of all, I'll start out, I support the mitigated negative declaration. And I think the county's already done quite a bit of work on this project. I've been working on it myself for over two years. And just to give some, a little background and information, I purchased the 43 acres in 2006, knowing that it was commercially zoned and with the intent of dividing it. It is the only remaining commercially zoned property, and it's by far the largest area zoned for commercial use in Kennedy Meadows. There are a couple of other two and five-acre parcels that are already developed. So, this is the only real space designated in the mountain plan for 30 years to be a commercial node. And it was authorized for 2.5-acre lots. There are also several, two, well, the smallest ones, 1.9 acres lots scattered immediately adjoining my development. And I think there's a total of six 2.5-acre lots adjoining my development. Yeah, I think five or six. Three of them are developed, Grumpy Bears, the restaurant, the fire department, and DuCor telephone companies across Kennedy Meadows Road. So, this area is already developed as a commercial area. Plus, there's a lot of private land clearing and trans and some other, and I can give you pictures of those if you want. One of the neighbors that this last weekend decided to object lives across Kennedy Meadows Road, but what he's going to look at at my property is nothing compared to what's next door to him. So, I think this is a very good area for commercial development, for small lots, for concentrating the commercial activity in Kennedy Meadows to a small area. And I think that would benefit the community and the county indirectly. The development is tucked, and the pictures can show that, but not real well. It's tucked in, it's relatively flat, but it's tucked into the base of the mountain. And there's quite a bit of trees, about 50, 60% of its forest, maybe a little more than that. So, I think it's not going to impact anybody's panoramic view. So, that's another reason I think this is an excellent place to concentrate development. My plan has been known in the community for over a year. I think it was sent out for comment over, about a year and a half ago. And as far as I know, there was no negative question. I've asked board members of the Kennedy Meadows property owners and associates, I've asked board members, have they heard anything negative about it? They've told me no. I've asked several other people in the community, and I have to admit, I'm not a full-time resident, so I don't know everybody. I live 30 miles away, but I don't live in Kennedy Meadows. And I've asked, is there any negative feedback? I'm very willing to come and meet with you and give you more information on why I think the project's good. And I was a little bit stunned this weekend when I get a call from somebody, not even directly, but calling saying, oh, one of my neighbors is mounting a petition campaign against this project. And, you know, it just kind of blew me away. So, I don't really have a lot of, a lot of time to get a lot of supporting statements. But I can, anyway, I can get into more detail on that if you need to. Another thing that I think might be relevant is I recently ran for one of the three vacancies on the Board of Directors of the Kennedy Meadows Property Association. There were four candidates. Three of us were elected. I was elected. In my bio statement, and I've got a copy of it that was sent out to every property owner, the only policy, other than just introducing myself personally, the only policy statement I made in my campaign, if you want to call that, was, quote, "Planned environmentally appropriate growth is in the future," period. They elected me. I assume that the majority of people who own property are there are not opposed to growth. I'm sure there are a few that are opposed to any growth, but enough to elect me to the board. So, I see no reason to further delay this because of this midnight, last-minute campaign. You have any questions?
I have just fallen this out there just to comment. Not that the decision was necessarily that I had yet, but some of the impression is that set it through tomorrow.
Well, yeah, that's a, that's a valid question. I think that's probably one of the reasons for concerns. But there are a couple of parts to that. One, it's authorized for two and a half acres. And if I'm going to divide the 43 acres, might as well divide it. It's not going to be used for 17 businesses. I would suspect that some people will buy two properties. It can also be used for housing. Somebody might use it for housing. The commercial use zoning regulations is pretty broad. So, I don't think it's going to turn into an industrial center. But it's, but it is, will be a good place to concentrate things. But you, somebody might set up a veterinary practice, come up once a week or once a month. Somebody might have a surveying office there, highly, very low impact. There are just, there are just a lot of uses. Yes, if all 17 were developed as 7-Elevens and gas stations, it would be pretty intense. But let's say there was a museum, a coffee shop, that could make actually a pretty nice town center for the Kennedy Meadows area and provide a center of activity. There is no other center of activity up there. The general store is on five acres, and it's pretty well-developed. It's popular. I think some of the people feel threatened that this is going to impact their business. I think it's probably going to make their business better. They're, they're right close to the PCT, the Pacific Coast Trail, and they're always going to be the primary target of that traffic. Hopefully, we can keep more of the people that drive through Kennedy Meadows to go up to Black Rock and all the stuff up there. Hopefully, we can provide an attraction for them to stay a little locally and enjoy Kennedy Meadows the way the rest of us do. You know, there's another, another possibility for some of that, maybe two parcels of it. Could be toy storage, especially the two parcels that are up next to the closed dump. I mean, the dump site is adjacent, and, you know, that's there. It's closed, but it's just a big dump site. So, this is, this is the ideal place to concentrate development.
What's the population that calls Kennedy Meadows home? I'd say mostly year-round residents.
Year-round residents? I think it's about 300. I just got elected. I just retired, so I have not spent much time, but I plan to learn all those statistics.
How many people voted in that election?
I don't even know that. I was on call the weekend of the vote count, so I couldn't go up for it. So, I don't, don't even know that. And I missed the first meeting because I had to work.
About, what was it, 6,000 elevation?
Mm-hmm. Little over.
So, what's the plan, and this were approved for road access in those 17 lots? How does that work?
I'm not sure what you mean.
The roads, obviously, right now, when you subdivide, what's, what's the plan to put the roads in and all the utilities and such?
Our contractors. I can't do it myself. And we've got, that's all planned. It's all on the plan. And those would all have to be approved by the appropriate county department. I mean, there's a lot of work left to do. That's why I hate to keep delaying it, because there's a lot of work to get all that done. And it'll have to be, it'll have to be roads to the standard of the Kennedy Meadows Plan.
Also, you mentioned the Pacific Coast Trail, and as someone who would use such a resource, I can tell you, that's going to have some effect in that area in the future. There's going to be more and more people using that and coming there for that. And it seems like, you know, maybe it's appropriate to have a few more things here.
Well, I think it is appropriate, and I think it's needed. Right now, there's a land sale. I mean, there are property signs up all over the place, people trying to sell because of the economy. That's going to turn around, and it's a gorgeous place. It's convenient. There are thousands of four-wheelers and snowmobilers come up there in the summer and winter, plus all of the traffic from the Pacific Coast Trail. And there isn't any place else that you can do a concentrated development. And it's not going to be, it's 17 parcels, but it's not going to be 17 businesses. That's, you know, that's an unplaced fear. And, you know, if somebody had said something to me, I could have explained all this to them. But I just, I, I really think most of the people, and I don't know how many the property owners are, but there's five, 600 that could vote. So, I, I don't think they're opposed to it, and I think they can see that that's inevitable and that it needs to be done. And I think even the people that are objecting to it will, will figure that out eventually.
Would it not be wise to have a presentation of your vision and your plan to the, of the others around here? Does that not help?
Well, sure, it would help. I just don't know that it's necessary. I've offered, I've offered to the board.
Go on, but then I'll argue.
Nobody's asked for one. I've, I've been open to give anybody information that wanted it. And I think what happened was your notice went out, it got published as the public hearing, and then they finally realized, oh, this is actually going to happen. And then there was, there were one or two people concerned about their view, which I can give you pictures, and my development would have any significant impact on that particular owner's view. And then also, I think there was some concern about, from the general store, that this was going to be some huge competition and ruin their business, which it's not going to. It's, if anything, it's going to help their business. So, I don't know. I mean, sure, we could go through, and we can have an election if you want. We can have a vote. I just don't think that it's worth having a vote of all of it. I don't, to ask whether I can use my property in the way that the Kennedy Meadows Mountain Plan authorizes. That went through a lot of public discussion before the mountain plan, and that's been the law up there for 30 years. It's just nobody's bothered to do it.
Well, it just seems to me that, if it's authorized and allowed, it's just good PR to have the local citizenry on your side.
Well, I thought they were.
Well, but you, obviously, they may not be...
Well, there's, I don't know, how many emails did we get?
Well, it may, it may be...
How many negative, how many positive emails did we get this weekend?
Maybe you want to do some sort of informational presentation.
Well, I'm sure that after this week, somebody will request some more information, and I'll be glad to give it to them. I just don't see any reason to delay it for a vote.
No, we can probably contribute this for the, for the, if you have some more information for us on the, on the, on the pitch.
Will that change the decision?
I believe so.
I mean, what, what can the objections be that, anyway? I don't understand why you're going to delay it, but I'll accept that. I just don't think it's necessary. And I'll be glad to, and I've offered to give more information to anybody that wanted it. Until Sunday or Saturday, I was totally unaware of any objection. So, I have not had a chance to do what you suggest.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, some of the objections made by opposition include what we call sequel-related issues, California environmental, we call it the Act. And when that is brought up, you know, it is incumbent upon us to evaluate their comment and come back and give the commission and the citizenry an informed testimony to let them know how or why these are legitimate or speculative, or if issues have been addressed. Obviously, the environmental document is available for review. I did not receive any requests for anybody to review that document. So, I believe many of the issues right now, based on my quick review of the emails received, have been addressed in the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. If there are concerns regarding air quality, those were addressed. We received a letter from the Air District, did not oppose it. We received a letter from Caltrans, essentially, it's a no-comment letter. So, they are aware of the intensity and the type of development that they are not concerned from that perspective. There were no comments to the cultural resources. There were no comments to the biological resources. So, I think this provides staff an opportunity to come back with a pretty thorough response, similar to the SIM plot that we had that one time, where we break down every single environmental-related question, and we just go down the list. And I'm not saying we rebut or refute, we're not doing that. What we're doing is that we're spelling out the facts. That way, then, the planning commission can make its determination. So, I, I believe that, that it would be appropriate to give staff that opportunity, that time to compile that information.
Okay. Yeah, and I appreciate the work you've done. You've obviously done, I thought, you've done all the work.
Oh, we have.
That, that's why I thought it was done.
It, it is, from our perspective, but now we have to respond to citizens' concerns.
Okay. So, and if, I think my engineer wanted to add something.
Good morning. I'm BJ Tucker, civil engineer, surveyor. I live in Eniokern at 6725 Locust Avenue. My comments will be very brief because it appears that the issue is going to be sent back to staff for further review. I have no problems with Caltrans' comments. That note can be put on the final map. Other than that, I understand that staff is going to review the emails that they received, and we will come back for a future meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make one comment, and that is, it is staff's responsibility to review all comments made, whether it's the day before or two weeks before, to write up our opinion of what is pertinent from those comments, and to make sure that you get all of the information and staff's analysis prior to you making a decision. So, that's the reason this project is being continued for two weeks, to make sure that we address all issues so that you can make a, your decision. to make sure that we address all issues so that you can make your decision.
I'll make that motion to continue this item to September twenty-fifth.
Second.
Gong.
Yes.
Meelis.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
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 Liliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Seven, County Economic Development, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, work plan presentation. Michael Washington, Economic Development Manager.
Good morning, Chairman and Planning Commissioner. Mike Washington, Economic Development Manager of the County. Recently went to the Board of Supervisors to give an update on the economic development activities in the county and our work plan for the year going forward. So I'm going to go through that presentation for you. It's a very large file. There's, here we go. Okay. This is an update and our work plan for Economic Development Office, which consists of business opportunities where I'm in charge of, and tourism and film commission, where Eric Coyne is focusing his work effort. Just to give a brief update on, one of our duties is managing the utility-scale solar projects. Thus far, we've approved twenty projects for a total of two hundred ninety-five megawatts. Three projects are now live for ninety megawatts. We've sent out annual invoicing fees to offset some general fund expenses, leasing, fire, and whatnot. This is already, needs to be updated. We sent off another twenty thousand dollar invoice this morning, so we're at thirty-one thousand that we've billed to cover some of the county's expenses. We have five projects that are currently under construction for fifty-three megawatts. Those are the Imoto projects that this commission approved not too long ago. They're already under construction. One, the Kingsburg project is actually complete, it just hasn't gone live yet. For these, for these facilities, they've created over six hundred jobs during the construction phase. And oftentimes, people think that the solar projects are just a construction job, a temporary thing. Well, this group, core group of workers have had an opportunity. As these projects are coming through the pipeline, it's one project, and as that one seems to go away and gets completed, the next one goes on. So what may appear to be a nine-month temporary construction thing has been going on for almost two years now. And looking at where some of these approved projects are, it looks like they're going to continue for the next few years of continuous construction, so, which is good for the workforce. A majority of the workers were trained through Proteus. They have a specific solar workforce pathway program. They've placed over four hundred and fifty of their trainees in jobs in Tulare County, as well as Kings and surrounding areas. And building permits, we've issued building permits in the last year and a half of a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of building permits. And the total construction value thus far for those permits is seventy-nine million dollars. Imoto, there's an article in the Fresno Business Journal a couple of weeks ago, that Imoto pulled twenty-nine million dollars worth of permits in the last six months. And they're the highest commercial construction in the Central Valley right now for the last six months. I have a little clip of grand opening of Atwell Island. Also, one of our primary focuses has been to repurpose vacant facilities. Just to highlight a couple of spots, Elderwood Market was, had burned at one point, and it's been out there vacant for quite a while. Ferry Farms is a small juicing facility that they were in Woodlake. They had to leave because they lost their lease. They were remodeling the complex they were in. So we were able to get them into this in an expedited manner, and it provided nine, saved nine jobs. They sell their juice through farmers' markets throughout all of California. Another one is the Green Tech. It's up in Sultana, there was an old packing shed. Actually, it had been foreclosed on. There was some illegal activity going on, and then the fire department closed the place down, and it went to foreclosure. Green Tech needed to relocate from Goshen, because Quea Container, which is a great story, moved out and expanded into that facility. That left them homeless, and we found a spot up in Sultana, and it worked out well. As well as, you're very familiar with the great guys on Shurk Avenue. That was an old veterinarian office building that we've been able to repurpose. We'll see. Some of the company expansions, just to highlight, I mentioned Quea Container. They moved their, they bought what was, I think it was an old, and I wasn't here when it was up and going, I don't think, but it was an aluminum place in Reynolds or something, was in Goshen, a large facility that Green Tech had subleased a portion of. They moved out there and provided a hundred new jobs, they expanded their container packaging facility, and they actually moved their administration office from Visalia to that location. Another one is, that we're working real close with, is Ventura Coastal. They have their Tipton facility, as well as the Visalia facility. They've made some big expansion. We work closely with them, and they've still got more plans in the future. And I got a little clip on that, too.
Ventura Coastal processes the majority of the orange and lemon juice produced in California at two plants located in Tulare County. The Tulare County Economic Development Office has assisted Ventura Coastal with significant plant expansions in both its Visalia and Tipton plants. The Tipton plant expanded its juice-holding capacity from two to nine tanks within the last year.
Well, welcome to Ventura Coastal Tipton Division, here to take a look at the investment we just made in new silos for our non-concentrated orange juice business and our lemonade business. Now, about fourteen months ago, we acquired the operational responsibility here for the Sunkist plant in Tipton. And we've spent the last year rationalizing between the two plants, which fruit runs best in which location, and making the appropriate investments. And the silos you saw going up today are an example of that, and our commitment to the Tipton plant.
How is it dealing with the county these days?
Well, I tell you, it's been interesting. I've dealt with building factories and expanding factories in Europe and in Florida and California. And lately, I would have to say, since the joint venture started, the environment here has been remarkable. Friendly, helpful, making sure that when we came to the table with a project, we knew what we needed to bring to you. Your team has been extremely helpful every step of the way. We love it.
Business startups is another aspect of the business opportunities. M&amp;A Foods is a small pomegranate facility in Pixley that will initially provide about twenty jobs. They should be opening, they're opening their doors now, they're actually in the hiring process currently. And what was kind of unique about that particular business is, on our new website that we've been up for about eighteen months now, that was the first company that we've, that inquired through our website that went all the way through from first inquiry, all the way through to building permits and completed. So it's kind of like our little baby or whatever. It's not a big company, but it might, they've got plans to grow. And we were, it was initially, it's a partnership, and the partners were split on the location. One was trying to locate in Toronto, Canada, and the other one convinced them to stay here locally. They're from the Bay Area, but now the owners bought some acreage and has actually planted some trees as well. So they're up and going. Commercial development, we have had a great groundbreaking in Early Market. This is a fantastic development, seven acres, and it's a retail commercial development at Ninety-Nine and Avenue Fifty-Six. When this thing gets completely fully built out, it could provide twelve businesses and up to a hundred and twenty jobs. Now, Dollar General has already come in for building permits, the planning commission has already approved that, as well as the Autozone. So those two are, well, Autozone's under construction, Dollar General will be picking up their building permits this week. Both of those businesses plan to be open before the end of the year. And the developer is close to signing some other tenants. The major one will be the grocery store and a fast food facility as well, restaurant. So those two, we don't, we can't disclose yet, but it was very close to signing on those. And that's an exciting project for the community of Early Market. Some of the national chains that we've worked with this year, AMPM in Pixley, Family Dollar has been putting stores in in Ivanhoe, Terabella, Cutler Rossi, the Autozone, which we mentioned, and the Dollar General, Pizza Hut, and Subway in Tipton. Couple of our other projects for the economic development is a sequoia field. We have a study for, an economic study for maximizing the benefit to the county of these county-owned facilities, being the Sequoia Field Airport. That draft report is nearing completion, and it should be presented to the Board of Supervisors sometime late October, probably. We also have a study with Fresno State that's nearing completion as well. It's an ag value chain study, economic study, that what we're looking at is, we know that the crop, well, this year now, over six billion dollars of value, by the time it goes from the fields to the fork, that value increases about tenfold. And we want to be able to see where we can focus our efforts to maintain as much of that value added within the county itself. In other words, we don't want our commodity to go to Denver to be processed, and then come back and end up on our shelves. We want to find out the best sectors and to aggressively go after to try to maintain that section and value in Tulare County itself, to provide jobs and opportunities to grow our economy. That, too, should be completed near the end of October. Harmon Field is another study that we have that will be completed about the end of the year. We're going forward with the reclamation of the pesticide issue that was there. That should be taken care of in the next eighteen months, I understand. And after that, what this study is for, to see the best potential uses for that facility. We spoke to a lot of organizations, business clubs, and organizations during the last year. And we had a number of advertisements and different promotional things throughout. This was in a National Magazine, a Site Select Magazine, some of our brochures and flyers for tourism and whatnot. One of our best pieces that we were able to do was with the World Ag Expo. We partnered with the Farm Bureau, and this is the front page of a twenty-page newspaper that was printed. Seventeen thousand, five hundred issues were printed, and we were able to get these in hotel rooms, restaurants during the World Ag Expo. And we had editorial comment, we had seven, about seven articles that we were able to put in there, the ad commissioner, the chairman of the board, whatnot. So this was a great tool that we were able to use. And the good thing about this was, these were getting in the attendees' hands before the event. Because once you get into World Ag, everything's thrown in direction. Well, this was nice, because it was in hotels the night before, so they were looking at it ahead of time. They weren't distracted by other, all the other brochures and flyers and stuff. So I think we did a real good job on getting that out. I just talked about that, the newspaper. We, and that one ad was, we helped the ad commissioner pay for full color the last two years, full color crop reports. They'd never been produced in full color. We were able to put a little bit in and put our place, our ad in there and help out with that. These are what we're focusing on this next year, agribusiness and industrial and commercial site inventory. We're looking along highway corridors, especially for business needs assessments. And we're going to partner with the Farm Bureau again on the World Ag Expo promotion. And we're working closely this year, there's reorg going in our planning branch, and we're going to work much closer with the grants division. And we're going to be looking at business-related infrastructure grants. And we're going to continue our green energy efficiency business development. Last night, at the Board of Supervisors, they passed the Tulare County PACE Program for financing green energy through property tax assessments. It's a good way, I can explain a little bit later, I guess in the director's report we'll mention that. We're also coordinating with the federal, local, and state entities and nonprofits to promote economic development within Tulare County. Now, as I mentioned, we're also, under the Economic Development Office, is the Film Commission. And last year, we went to the Oscar pre-party, and I've got a little clip on that, too.
A South Valley Film Commission is taking to the red carpet for this Sunday's Academy Awards. Action news South Valley reporter Jessica Paris shows us how stars will get a taste of Tulare County, and why many hope it'll allure filmmakers to the South Valley.
Tulare County has breathtaking views and beautiful scenery depicting the valley's rich agriculture. Eric Coyne from the Tulare County Film Commission hopes these views and some of Tulare County's proud local products are some of the main attractions for stars at this year's Academy Awards.
In Hollywood, it's all about appearances, and we've got the Sierras, the giant sequoias, and agriculture.
The Tulare County Film Commission has a coveted spot at a pre-Oscar party, and is hoping to rub shoulders with many in the filmmaking industry.
Everybody that's a movie buzz wants to see the movie stars. But really, the ones we're focused on is the movie producers and the location managers.
You'll be able to network from, with the president of Screen Actors Guild Award to representatives from Disney.
Lindsay native Susie Picasso is the marketing and event coordinator for the Borgenheim Group, which is putting on a star-studded red carpet pre-Oscar gifting suite on Saturday night. One free gift celebrities will get Barry Olive Oil manufactured in Dinuba.
We get a chance to really shed some light on what we're doing here in the Central Valley. There's, we really are the food basket of the world.
Celebrities will not only get a sample of olive oil, they'll also get some pistachios from Sutton Pistachio in Terabella, Essential Potion, which is a natural home spray made in Tulare, and an Oscar-shaped cookie made by Sweet Confections in Lindsay.
I'm not as familiar with all this, but the Film Commission was established to create film activity within Tulare County and assist with the industry, you know, filming in the county provides, it's very close to tourism. It provides nights in hotels, it provides opportunities for local business, for catering and whatnot. And we have a couple advantages over the national parks. We allow filming in balls, whereas they, if a company is looking for redwoods, we can provide that without the obstacles they face when they obstacles they face when they go to try to do any filming in Sequoia, it's just pretty much not going to happen. Excuse me. We've had, this year, there's been a number of commercials and three films filmed locally. We filmed, we actually had a premiere of a couple films. One was Lost on Purpose, some, a couple Woodlake, young guys from Woodlake originally grew up in Woodlake filmed that here, and they have, right now, it's going through the film festival circuit. They actually won a Best Director Award at one of the film festivals for that. And then there was another movie, and I'm trying to remember the name of it, a couple girls from Visalia filmed, I can't remember the name of it. Anyway, it was another good piece, and we have another one that's under, they're editing it right now, and that should be out shortly as well. So we have some, it's kind of a fun thing, but it actually provides a lot of economic benefit. This kind of, oh, right, that was the one that I was talking about. The filming days, we've had over 47 days of filming activity, and that estimated to be worth $1.5 million to the local economy, from the hotel space to the local businesses. We also participate with the Slick Rock Film Festival and some other, right now, we're in negotiations with Danny Triho, I don't know if you know, it might be not the, Machete, okay? And it's coming out, Machete 2 is coming out. Well, we're trying to secure him for an event with Step Up and some probation kids and some other things, so we have a number of events here in about a month. We're very close to having him come up, so that'd be a good deal too. For the tourism, we sponsored some of the, some of the things we've done is the Disc Golf Classic, which actually was just held. So this is from last year, we just held one a couple weeks ago, I think it's Labor Day weekend, so that's already occurred. Bounty and Accounting, we partner with the Farm Bureau on that, as well as other opportunities with the Farm Bureau. So we also advertise and work with Sequoia Visitors, copies of the annual guide, go to the Los Angeles, Long Beach Travel Show, as well as Bay Area Travel Show, and have a booth in the World Ag Expo for the tourism. You know, unfortunately, World Ag Expo, usually people are already booked, but what we're doing is selling them for the next time, come back to Tulare County and see what we have to offer. And that's, that's the end of my update. If there's any questions, I just wanted to keep you guys abreast of what we're doing, what our activities are.
Okay, let's move then to the item eight, Director's Report, Finding Director Update.
I don't have anything to say, but I think Michael Washin does, and I think Mr. Guera does as well.
Well, I just, last night, the Board of Supervisors held their, one of their road hearings, they were in City of Woodlake, and we had a number of items on the agenda. One was the PACE program, the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. They authorized that, that should be up and going. We're going to host a informational workshop on September 30th at 2:00 at the RMA, for anybody that wants to learn more about the PACE program and how it could benefit businesses. It's strictly a commercial program, it's not residential at this time, it's for agricultural businesses and industrial and commercial and residential, five units or larger in size. So that's where that program's at. We also went to the Board with Bike and Ped Program for some improvements, paths in the community of Alpa and Terabella. Sutton Pistachio is moving forward with a park that's not a park, it is a employee recreational area that they're going to allow the community to enjoy as well. And they're making quite an investment in that. And in conjunction with that, we've identified some, some safe routes to the school, to that facility and back. Also, that will also help the medical clinic that the planning commission just looked at for, in there, as well, that pathway will provide good access for that, as well as the elementary school and back to that. So I think there was another small item for Sequoia Field, and I'll let Hector.
One question, Mike, was that 12-weeker park that we just looked at, was that what you're talking about, or is there another little, another?
No, that was a different, that was a different one, yeah.
I have a couple of items, like Mike mentioned, last night, the Board of Supervisors took an action to adopt a categorical exemption for another grant to build, actually not build, but replace the existing men's correctional facility at Sequoia Field. And that's, the grant will be submitted at the end of this next month, but CEQA needed to be completed, and this is one of those unique situations where the granting agency is basically saying, complete CEQA first, including the 35-day potential challenge period. So that in itself provided a challenge, because we were then tasked to get what Mike Spata and I call an expanded categorical exemption, which is one of these documents that you've seen before, it's a cat exempt, but then we go through every single resource and identify why there's not going to be an impact. There were a variety of classes that it qualified for, but particularly would be, it's basically the same use on the same footprint with modern facilities, it would actually result in a reduction of water usage because the facilities there are so antiquated. Now, with respect to Commissioner Elliott, I know he's concerned about historical preservation issues as I am, I'm a history major. So there are, it is within the National Register of Historic Places, it is an historic district. The buildings are not going to be demolished, they're going to be removed, they're going to be replaced and relocated to a vacant site that's currently used, I believe, for agriculture, the raising of crops for the farm animals they have there. So what we're going to do is hire a consultant with that preservation expertise to make sure that we don't damage anything, you know, so we are following the proper protocols by the Secretary of the Interior to make sure that we preserve that cultural and historic heritage that the county has at Sequoia Field. So that being said, that is an important project, I believe it's a $40 million jail replacement project, so it's almost as big as the South County Detention Facility, which is a $60 million project. But it's badly needed, as many of the buildings that are being used are in deteriorating condition, that area used to be a swamp, so back when they were constructed in about World War, World War II, about 1941, they didn't do the proper foundation work, they didn't take into account that, you know, we drained the swamp and now, well, the water will recur, so there's a lot of rot in the wood, a lot of termites, there's a lot of mold, there could be potential asbestos, so it is kind of potential to be unsafe, but that'll be determined at a later date. But this will provide the Sheriff Department a chance to compete and move up in the ranking process because CEQA is done. So that process, we will file today, the action date was taken last night, we will file today that notice of exemption, it should have been done by now if Mike I did his job, and we will FedEx, or overnight package, I don't want to say FedEx, overnight package that to the State Clearing House because it is a state-funded project. So it will go to the Board, I believe, on October 22nd for a decision to submit the final application because the CEQA process has to be done. Extreme timeframe because the application has to be received by the end of business on October 24th. So, whoa, you know, we really got to move on this, and we are. So that was one of the big significant things that happened for us, and I am slow and dragging today, my item didn't go on until about 10:00. I had to drive back to Fresno, I got home about 11:30, and I'm like, you know, tired, so forgive me. We are working on four EIRs right now for you, just as an update there for Pixie Biogas, that is an anaerobic digester, but unlike the Harvest Power Digester that you approved not too long ago, this one is not going to be, well, it's going to be doing mostly manure, you know, and then it will bring in foods, what they call feedstock, which is fats, oils and, fats, oils and, what's the G for the guys? Sorry? Grease, thank you. See, told you. That they will put into the anaerobic digester and make that part of the process to then create a fuel source to generate electricity back to the grid. You know, so that's, that's another thing that we're looking at. This has the potential to result in 40 more anaerobic digesters, most of them will be sited on dairies, and then that will be used to treat, use a waste and as the fueling source. That's pretty exciting stuff. So we did that, but, so Pixie Biogas is doing that. We have one for the juvenile detention facility, that's a program EIR, it's flood, it's a flood control project, so that was going forward. We have one for Orocy Rock, they want to expand their operation, so that is going forward, and Penya's Materials Transfer and Recycling Facility. So we were busy, and then day-to-day stuff, you know, all the things that we do here, like the mitigated deck that you will hear at your next hearing for this parcel map in Kennedy Meadows areas. I have enrolled to go to the California Planning Commissioners Association Conference, so I will be attending that. And in about two weeks, I will be going to Mammoth, of all places, to attend a CEQA and NEPA update seminar. So we're trying to stay current and we're pretty busy. Oh, one more thing, I will be getting a new Planner 4 on September 23rd. This is a journey-level planner with about 15 years' experience, comes from the Southern California area, very impressive background in working in entitlements and developments and CEQA, NEPA. So on the other hand, I'm losing a Planner 4 half-time. You know, he has a diversity, a very diverse background, and he's going to be working on a thing called the Palms System, it's an electronic system that we have in the county for, it's called, I guess, the Permitting and Land Use Management System. Palms, it's kind of like a successor to what we call Lewis, the Land Use Information System. So I'm getting, gaining a Planner 4 and I'm losing a half a Planner 4, so that's where we stand, we are, we are busy.
I've got a comment, Hector, on, whenever we're working with National Register-listed properties, a good place to start is a definitive inventory of what's there, mapping, there's a HABsHARE process that's usually required in this type of thing. And when things get relocated, a lot of times they're damaged beyond use at another site or they find out it's not feasible to move them. This way, we have a definitive record of what was exactly there at the time that the project took place. So that's something that you might want to discuss with your consultant.
Oh, we do, we do, Commissioner Elliott, I mean, it is very extensive. When they went through the application, there was, they were all cataloged, I believe there were 22 total resources, and I think 18 of them are considered contributors, so it's a very extensive inventory, and that will be shared with the consultant.
Could you send me a copy of that electronically? Or a link to it or something? I'd like to take a look at that.
Sure, I can do that.
Thanks.
Okay, item nine, then, is our planning commission discussion items to request future agenda.
No agenda items, but I'm hope, we still have a chance to sign up if you're available for the CCPCA conference, October 11th and 12th. And I got to admit, our staff here did a great job in making it seamless, so I appreciate it, Velma. Thank you very much.
All right, if there's nothing else, you're a jerk.